We're just waiting for cable to turn on.
Got it.
Which it's on now. Awesome. So, welcome, everybody, to Newton's Planning Board Meeting on June 14, 2022. I like to call the meeting to order at 7:02. I'd like to salute the flag. Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a free republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen. Not sure who that is. Okay, so, first on the agenda is a preliminary concept consultation for Ms. Kelly McCarthy of Newton. I'm sorry about that. For preliminary conceptual consultation for a horse stable at 45 Highland Street in Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 5, Block 4, Lot 18-2. And it looks like she provided some renderings for us to look at. Are you also here? Perfect. Do you want to give us a quick excerpt of your project? Just can you go to the microphone in case there's people on Zoom? Thank you.
That might be way too short. So, the project is a personal barn. It's 36 by 60, which is why I'm here. It is that the line that you're seeing is not a property line. It was part of a lot line adjustment. So, there's no lot lines within 100 feet of the barn. And it takes up about 0.07 of an acre of the 26 and 1/2 acres that we have. It's not commercial. And it's, yeah, it's six stalls.
Okay. And I know Jen has reviewed this. So, by our regulations, this would have to go in front of us for a major site plan review?
Yeah, so because of the, so as even though it's a personal agricultural use, it's still a non-residential use. So, it does fall under the jurisdiction of your site plan regulations, which do have a limit on a structure size of 2,000 square feet being the limit. This with the overhang is about 2,700 square feet. So, by that, it would normally kick it into a major site plan requirement. But you do have at your discretion, and the property owner can apply for a waiver, to have it fall under your minor site plan regulations, which you still have to approve. It's still noticed. It still requires information about location and some of the information that's been presented. It does seem to fit more under that level of review because of its somewhat de minimis impact. So, I would recommend that, and this is all non-binding, that you kind of recommend that she go for a minor site plan, even though this would typically require a major.
And so, the path forward for the applicant would be for them to apply for a minor site plan review and provide a waiver for when they come in front of us again to move this forward for a review and a potential approval. Okay. I don't know if...
I was just going to say, I've worked with Ms. McCarthy before, and I can walk her through the process.
Okay.
Where is your house on this?
It's about 150 feet in front of the barn, which is still about 600 feet from the road. So, you can't, you can see our back fence line. That is that
Yeah, I see that.
half round thing. That's our back fence line, and our house is in front of it. So, with the, even with a minor site plan, you do require a approximate-to-scale sketch. Because they've had a recent lot line adjustment, they actually have a property boundary for their current property. So, locating the barn on that would be the easiest way to do that.
Okay. I don't think I have any more questions. Does anybody else on the board have any questions? And we have Mr. Lavoy on Zoom. And is Ms. White there today, or did she disappear?
He's still there.
How about Barbara?
How about who?
Barbara. Barbara's not here today?
Not yet.
Okay. Mark, do you have any questions?
None from me.
Awesome. So, we'll see you in a couple of weeks?
Hopefully. Thank you.
Thank you. The second item on our agenda tonight, the applicant, I believe, has withdrawn their request to be here. So, they're moving forward. The administrative assistant has provided some guidance, I believe. So, we may see them again. And now, I would like to move this to a public meeting at 8 past 7. So, the first thing on the agenda for the public session is Bradley and Susan Austin of Newton, New Hampshire is requesting a public hearing for Lot 2 subdivision at, or sorry, for two-lot subdivision at 67 North Main Street, Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 10, Block 10, Lot 8. Ms. Rowden, can you provide your input on the completeness of this?
Sure. The application appears to be complete. The only thing is that the, my only recommendations are recording of all of the well and utility easements that are proposed, and that all of the state permits, which would be the subdivision approval, which Mr. Quintel provided at the beginning of the meeting, and getting the DOT driveway permit be received. And I know he's going to cover some amendments from the original plan set that you got. That is beyond any of your normal conditions of approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. My, my name is Dennis Quintel, civil engineer. And I was asked by Mr. Austin, who's here, Bradley Austin, to develop a subdivision plan for him. And so, I think it's neat that you've got a screen like this. I'm usually just struggling to point things out on here. But it works out pretty nice that you have that there. So, that's, that's a good thing. And I did give you some copies in front of you. There were a few minor changes on the one in front of you compared to the one that's presented to you. But we started out by doing a perimeter survey. We were fairly sure at that point in time that there was at least 120,000 square feet, because we needed at least 60,000 for each lot. And so, we did a perimeter survey under the guidance of Albert Terry Trudell, who's our licensed land surveyor. And we did find that the lot size is greater than the minimum requirements for lot size. But we still didn't know until we did a high-intensity soil map, because, as you know, your regulations require the high-intensity calculations to make sure that, that it falls within the 60,000, or if not, you have to make more than 60,000 square feet per lot. So, we proceeded to do a high-intensity soil map, and we found that there were no wetlands on the site. There are wetlands just off-site on the, right on the northerly side, right there. And Mr. Austin has his well right there, which is on the abutters property. It's always been there. But we're proposing a new well to be placed just in behind his existing house, which is a three-bedroom house. And at that point in time, we utilizing the high-intensity map that we got from GOV Environmental, and, and, and have a property line that comes up and goes up through here to subdivide the lot into two separate lots, which we were able to do to meet the requirements for lot area. We then took a look at conducting test pits for the soils for septic systems. And we have a more like a square up in the upper corner, left, the northerly corner of Lot 1, which is the homestead lot. And then we, so we had two test pits there. And we've got two test pits on the backside of what would be Lot 2, which would be the, the, the new lot that we're creating. And we show the setback lines for each, each lot. We, we show also there's an existing telephone pole that serves electricity to the back shed on the property. And so, we've created an easement for that electric line to, to, to the pole that goes to that, that lot. So, it would be an easement that's on Lot 2 for the benefit of Lot 1. And obviously, that would have to be a deeded easement for, for that. The wells that we show, both proposed wells on both lots, meet the state requirements of being within the lot lines. The town requirement of 100 feet is within, it doesn't encroach on any of the abutting properties, but there will be an overlap onto each of these properties. And therefore, we will have an easement for those protective zones around the well. So, the plan in front of you also shows, that you have in front of you shows the abutters well, which is on the southerly side. I met with him, and their, their well is in the cellar of the house. And the plan that you have in front of you shows where that is. And also, the lot to the northerly side, there's a, we show the protective zone around his well, which just barely goes over the property on, on Lot 1. The second sheet, which is our site plan, has the test pit data in the upper left-hand corner. It has all the soil information on there for the high intensity. It has the calculations for lot size by soil type. And it proves that each lot has more than enough for one lot, meeting the requirements of the town. So, it does show a little bit more detail there. The third sheet is the sheet for the driveways. And I submitted a plan to begin with to the, to DOT for driveway for the new lot. And they responded by saying that they wanted to have, show the, that the, that both lots will be able to meet the state setback requirement, or state sightline requirements of 400 feet in each direction. And they also said that this property could only stand to have two driveways. So, the existing hushoo driveway, we're proposing to close off the northerly side. And that way there, that the Lot 1 would have the driveway, the existing southerly driveway for that. And then the second driveway would be the proposed driveway for the proposed lot. And both of those have the, meet the state requirements for the line of sight. I sent that plan in almost two weeks ago. I haven't got a reply back from the state. But, I mean, I met the requirements for what they asked for. So, I'm pretty sure that that's something that I'll get within the next few days. I checked my mail again today, and it didn't come. So, that could also be a condition of approval. It has the line of sight requirements and the profiles of what the driveway requirements are. And, and along with that, I think on Sheet 1, I probably didn't do that, didn't show the northerly driveway being discontinued. But on Sheet 1, I think I need to show that, because that's the sheet that's going to be recorded. That's one of the other things that I'll need to do on this, on this, on Sheet 1. I do have a note on Sheet 1 that says, and I'm not sure if this is acceptable to the board, but upon sale of these lots, easement documents for the utilities and well protective zones shall be recorded. When I got the message from Jen about the recording deed, I was wondering how to, for Mr. Austin to write a deed to himself, or when he sells the lots, then you write a deed typically. So, I don't know how, if you require that to be, write a deed to himself, or can, can that be a condition that it's on the, a note that's on the plan, that when he does sell the lots, that obviously easements have to be written for, for that? So, I don't know how, how you handle something like that. So, that was a question that I had. But I did put a note on the plan. I don't know if that's good enough. But certainly something we can work out and further discussion. But so, again, those are the three sheets. The second sheet is a site plan, more or less, which shows a little bit more detail about the soils, the contour lines, and all the other stuff that's on there that's on, on Sheet 1, too. One also. All the abutters are listed there. It was notified. So, I guess that's kind of all I need to say right now. We, obviously, we do have to have the surveyor stamp on it and the stamp from, from GOV Environmental, who did the soil, high-intensity soil map. And we'll need to set the bounds as a condition sometime. So, and produce the final mile off of recording. So, I think that that's all I need to say right now. But I certainly can answer any questions that the board has.
Thank you. So, we kind of misstep, but can, I have a motion for taking jurisdiction for completeness?
Well, Jen, this is complete from what you said, basically.
I think it is complete.
So, I'm going to make a motion that we, we accept it as complete and take it on, take it for jurisdiction.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jim.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
You have to unmute yourself.
I did.
Thank you.
Aye.
He's very quiet, but he said aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Masham?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
So, does anybody have any questions? And, oh, sorry.
So, it's not a question, but the note on the plan about the deed being executed upon sale would be a very common way to handle.
Okay.
And then to answer his question about the permits, Jen?
You want to have the permits noted on the plan set before?
Well, I mean, not the permits, but the, the question that he asked about the...
About the easements?
Yes.
Yes, that, the note that's on here
Is fine.
would be, would be a fine way to handle that, yes.
So, there you go. So, alls I think we have to do is come up with what we, what we need to show up on here. Jim, you got those?
That's what I was just going to say. Item 1 is set the bounds, supply copies of the recorded deeds with the easements, supply the recordable miles, and obtain a DOT driveway permit, which needs to be listed on the mile law, as well as the information from the paperwork tonight that needs to be on the mile law.
And all professional stamps?
So, we have GOV Environmental...
Oh, stamps.
Mr. Quintel stamp and...
The surveyor.
Surveyor, thank you.
Terry Trudell, and also GOV Environmental, who did the soil work. They'll be the, the three stamps on there. Mine is a professional.
Without several of them, they're not recordable.
We also do have the state subdivision approval, which I note on the plan. But the DOT is still spending, pending. So, as soon as I get the DOT permit number, I'll put that on, on, on that sheet that's going to be recorded. The other thing is that I think on Sheet 1, I, I think I should identify that driveway as being discontinued on Sheet 1, just as a reminder. So, I'll make sure I do that, too.
You do still have to open up the public hearing, though, or public comment?
Sure. Is there any comments from the public? Is there anybody on Zoom? Is it, is it the four people I see?
Someone's got a hand up.
Yeah, that's it.
That's it?
Only one of those is a...
Yeah, it's only me. There's no one else.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what happened to Ms. White.
Okay.
Well, then I'll make a motion to accept with those...
Conditions.
Conditions.
Second.
Roll, please, Jim.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Can you hear me?
Now we can. Can you say either way now? Yay or nay?
I said aye. Can you hear me? Aye.
We heard it that time. Thank you, Mark.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
Mr. Masham?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Great. So, Jim, I assume you will be sending me a copy of the
Yes.
list and...
I should be doing them on Thursday, when the chair gets into sign. You'll have it as soon as it's, I'll email it to you before it's signed.
We're going to try to set the bounds this week, but I just want, before I plot the mile law, I want to make sure everything of the conditions are met. And then I'll get that to you. But thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
We'll be talking again someday.
Thank you very much. And next on the agenda is the applicant Michael and Kathy Hill of Newton, New Hampshire requested public hearing for an accessory dwelling unit at 10 Crossman Circle in Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as Tax Map 8, Block 2, Lot 12-10. Ms. Rowden, can you provide your input?
Sure. It does meet all of your requirements for accessory dwelling. The only thing is that I think, because it took me a little while looking between the assessor's map and the drawing that was provided to clarify how the proposed ADU was going to be attached through an interior door to the existing dwelling. I see that there is space for it. But just for clarity and making sure the board was comfortable with that specific provision, I thought if the applicant could point that out, that would be helpful for everybody.
Okay. Can I have a motion for taking jurisdiction and completeness of this application, please?
So moved.
There you go.
Mr. Guide? Bob, second.
Hey, Sam?
You can.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Masham?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you. Do you want to give us the details, please?
Yeah. We, really what we're looking to do is remodel our garage into a, where my daughter's actually going to live. So, it's, we're going to bump it out five feet. But it's already attached to the property. I don't know, Jen, if this helps. There's a couple of, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I would start on that side.
Anyways, you probably remember that. But there's a, this, this door here just goes into the house, essentially. So, which leads you to this guy here, which you get to that from the door there. So, it's sort of, that's how we always go into the house, get into the walkway. And this is our door into the garage, essentially, there. So, everything's attached already. So, the only thing we'll do is we're looking to bump it out five feet, you know, to just give it a little bit more room. I think this is about 714 square feet, I think, at the end of it all. My measurements are right. So, that's, I mean, that's really it in a nutshell. Put a, put another bathroom in there. We had the test pits dug. You know, we had new septic design that was done that's been submitted, you know, as well. So, I think the challenge is going to be cleaning out the garage. But that's, that's really about it.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody from the board have any questions or comments?
Nope, it's pretty cut and dry.
How about from the public? Doesn't appear like we have any comments.
Good.
Okay. Ms. Rowden, any final?
So, with, typically with an accessory dwelling, your conditions of approval would be that they get all of the building permits that are necessary, which includes verification that the septic facilities are adequate, so to cover that. And that's it.
Perfect.
And in honor of Ms. White, who isn't here, she usually asks that on the notice of decision, it be noted that the limit of the accessory apartment is 800 square feet.
Okay. That's a fine condition, or noted on the, is it a condition, or is it a?
It, it's sort of her boilerplate.
It's a reminder.
You can't make it too big.
No, it's the garage. Yeah, exactly.
That's totally fine.
It's undersized, but it, just in case they decide they...
I'm okay with that. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept with conditions. Jim will read out loud again, please. That one condition?
Well, there are three. There's obtain all late local and state permits, a life safety inspection, and the limit of the accessory apartment to 800 square feet.
Okay.
Second.
That work.
That was Mr. Guide.
And roll, Jim, please.
Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
I heard him.
He said aye.
I was just going to say. Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Masham?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. So, I can stop? Can I confirm it? There you go. Thank you.
You can't start until you have your notice of decision.
Yep.
But it, yes, we're not, you're through.
If anyone wants to clean it out a little, that's all. It's actually the lather screen to clean out the garage.
Next on the agenda, we have some board business. You're welcome to leave unless you want to sit here and listen to us. So, acceptance of the minutes from May 24, 2022.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Thanks, everyone.
Second.
Take care. Thanks for coming. You have a good night.
Den. Mr. Guide, second.
Take care.
Okay, Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Masham?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Okay. Next is approval of the NEPA, NEPRA manifest for the total of $846.56.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Moran?
And it's the pesky fly that won't go away.
Aye.
Mr. Lavoy?
Aye.
He did say aye, but I'm not sure what's...
Because I'm literally screaming into my computer.
Whatever you did, Mark, when you moved closer, it was much louder.
There you go.
Thank you. Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Masham?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
And Jim, that is right there.
Yeah.
So, I don't see...
I have no idea where the, someplace in this building, those manifests disappeared. I know I put them in a doorway downstairs. That's the extent of my culpability.
That's fine. And I think, I think Mr. Piper was trying to get out of the update on the master plan steering committee, but I don't think Mr. Lavoy is going to be able to provide an update.
I might be able to do it if you would like me to.
We did, just that we do have a meeting coming up tomorrow. Mark will be joining via Zoom, I'm assuming. Annie's supposed to be there. And we don't have enough input from the town departments. So, we've asked the board of selectmen to get involved. More details to follow.
And if I recall, you're missing information potentially from the fire department, the police department?
And so on.
And so on, just about every department?
Enter Bob. Posted as of today, what I did was I got in touch with Mark. I got hold of the copy. I don't know if the departments had had it about, I actually left the other one at home. So, it's got all the items that they want listed, what capital improvement is supposed to be, the estimated cost, a detail of... a detail of what it's supposed to be, the importance of it, if it needs to be done immediately, or whatever that sheet there, there was like four, four or five items listed. So we sent that out to the department heads, and this Thursday at 3 o'clock, I'm gonna be having a me, putting a meeting together with the department heads, and those that can't make it, hopefully will be able to be on via Zoom. I'll do a quick walkthrough with that, and then hopefully I can maybe get a little push going with the department heads as far as getting that, so that we can get that to you guys.
Just to jump in, can you guys hear me?
Much better this time.
Okay, cool. It's like, my lips are like on my computer. All right, so the one point of clarification is that the fire department, they have submitted their requests. They just do not, they have not provided any timelines, and his his point around that is that he has no idea when the fire engine is going to die. And we're trying to push back and say, you still need to provide estimates because that's literally what every other department is doing. So we're still waiting for just that point of clarification. So Bob, if you can really just push on him in particular to get that wrapped up, because he's given us, I'm, I'm sure he's checked the box in his head, but we, we need to fully check that box. We haven't gotten everything we need.
Yeah, I'll talk to him about, because there were numerous trucks that he was talking about, so I'll see if I can't get him to at least put them in order to what importance he think the newest one should be and whatnot, and how soon rather than later.
And I
And then the last thing too, Bob, is in the emails today, I don't know if you saw, there was a question about whether we should be adding, I think it was the transfer station to the list. They weren't on it. And we should, they should definitely be on it. I don't know how we missed that, but let's just make sure that they're included.
All right. I'll reach out to Pete and go, we'll go over it.
And I'm sure it's just an estimation, so like the least likely truck that needs to be replaced by the fire department is probably like the new Chevy that they just got, or the tanker. Those are compared to other vehicles, so it's, it's not like this is set in stone by any means.
Right.
This is just an approximation. Do you have anything to add?
It's just goals. We just, we just need goals.
If, if a fire department, or the police would apply as well, if they have vehicles that they know at some point they're going to need to replace, they may not have that vehicle identified or know the cost. The way that's handled in many municipalities is they start a curing a capital, basically a fund for purchasing a future truck, and put in $100,000 a year, or whatever the right amount is, so that when you do need that new truck, you have the funds available, built up slowly over time to do that, if he doesn't know when the truck is gonna go, or the cost at that time, so.
Okay.
Annie did, Annie did explain that to him, to which there was no reply. But it is an important point we need to emphasize.
I'll, I'll talk with him, Mark.
Thank you.
And I think the last thing on the agenda is
Actually, just, just to remind the Master Plan Steering Committee, I don't know if somebody is using their own Zoom, but I will not be here tomorrow to run Zoom.
Are we allowed to use our own Zoom? Is that okay to use your own Zoom?
I, I would turn to the, to the ex officio, who might know.
Does it have to be publicly?
It's gotta be public, publicly notified within 24 hours before you can have it.
So can we like create a party or however that works?
I've already, I've posted the meeting
Okay.
yesterday.
Oh, for a, for a subcommittee member to participate in the meeting, the audience has to be able to see and hear them, and you, and they have to be able to see and hear everyone, so as long as someone's Zoom account, if it's just for, say, Mark,
Yeah.
you know, it's turned around and people can hear him to participate, then you can do it that way, even if it's not the town Zoom.
Okay.
I could also just like call one of you guys, and you put me on speakerphone, right?
Yep, that also can work.
Why don't we just do that? And I'll email you my phone number.
Sounds good.
All right. This is all if I don't test negative tomorrow. If I test positive, I'm not coming in. If I test negative, well, I leave that decision to you guys.
I'm not gonna be here, so I have no comment.
You guys meaning, you know, the two that will be there.
So you, you guys will figure that out?
Yep.
Perfect.
Yeah, Mark, and I'll, I'll let you know, because like I said, I'm meeting with them Thursday at 3:00. So I'll, I'll reach out to you probably Friday.
Great.
And then last is for us to I believe extend the contract for Ms. Roudin and the circuit rider and RPC.
Yeah, the, the number of hours that you guys are getting for me to come to your meetings and provide technical assistance remains the same. There was a slight uptick in the hourly rate, just to deal with cost of living increases. The only other subtle difference is that you may note that we're gonna just start how we do our billing for you guys to be able to charge my time to applicants the same way you do your town engineer. We're just gonna switch the process, so it's a little bit easier on the town and for us for billing purposes. It's the same process we've been doing, but it'll, I'm sorry, it's the same mechanism in the contract, but it will just be procedurally a little bit different, so.
Okay.
Has everybody saw on their NEPA accounts? And this is what, I, I didn't get a chance to call in that. Will we be getting sheets like the one that we just got for the, for you?
We're gonna have it so that we can make a monthly invoice, but you can see on a day-to-day basis, like when I review a plan. If it takes, basically if it takes me more than 15 minutes to half an hour, I'll mark it down so that you can charge the applicant for that time from your NEPA accounts, the same way you would with the town engineer. And anything that's left goes back to them. So for small projects like you had tonight, those don't take long for me to charge. You don't need to charge those folks. You know, for the bigger applications, then yes, it can occur, you know, hundreds of dollars of time, potentially.
Yeah, as you saw on the NEPA manifest, there was, we're saving roughly $700 of what we paid into the contract off of Ms. Roudin's time by being able to charge all of that review and what have you to the applicant.
So it removes it from the town's budget and puts it towards the applicant for the larger projects, but generally
For larger projects.
Generally does not impact most residential review processes.
Correct. And a major subdivision may cure a little bit, site plans almost always, but minor site plans, lot line adjustments, accessory dwellings, typically not.
Okay.
So do we need to make a motion to approve?
Yes, please.
Second.
Your choice, Jim.
Okay, Mr. Moran?
Aye.
Mrs. Lavoy? And don't ask me why I'm shouting at the, the computer.
If, you said aye, Mark, just raise your hand, please. How's that?
He says, he said aye. I heard it.
Mr. Guide?
Aye.
Mr. Mashon?
Aye.
Mr. Piper?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Awesome. And do you have a copy of that contract?
Yes. It's in the back room.
Okay.
And I just have one other thing to pick up on, and this is just for information for the board to think about, because it's not on the board business. This would be other. But just like Jim talked about real quick, about being able to bill the participants that come before us for Jen when she needs to put time into their accounts. We do have the ability, that I talked with Mr. Moran, and he's, he's aware of it, that on some of these bigger contractors that come in, we have the ability to set up a fund that they will pay into so that the town can hire their own engineer to keep tracks, to keep track of of how that is being done and developed, and that we might in the future want to start doing that, so that we'll have eyes on these things as they're done.
Do you, sorry, to continue on that.
We, we currently do that.
Oh, we do currently do that?
Right.
With, with large projects, before they're allowed to actually start construction, they have to meet with the town engineer, which is an employee of the planning board technically. They set up a schedule of when the silt fencing is going to be in, the town engineer shows up to inspect. There's, there's a whole bunch, usually there's a group of
Major milestones that they
Exactly. Milestones that once they're hit, the engineer comes, reviews, and makes sure if the town thinks that something, you know, we have rained for 20 days and 20 nights, and we suspect the silt fences may not have survived, we have the ability to call the town engineer to go and review, and they can actually issue an order to replace silt fences and what have you.
And that's through KW?
Yeah, that's Mike Bignelli with KV Pop.
KV, thank you.
I just wanted everybody to be aware of that.
Because we haven't, us as a board has not
Have not used that.
Right. Right at the moment, you're actually there's one project going on in town, and that's Xena Lane off of Pond Street, that you have actually in the past three months signed on NEPA manifest, you've done about, he's done about $1,500 worth of inspections and what have you.
Could those reports be provided to the board? Or his comments? Is there any like?
He doesn't usually do comments. He usually actually meets with the developer and walks over the site and
Okay.
It's been a little bit of a free-flow thing where they show up, they immediately say, yeah, that's all good, but see that section there, that needs to be straightened out, versus the engineer sending us something that then has to go to the, to the developer. It usually, he's inspecting for something that could cause, you know, silt to get into groundwater, that sort of thing. It's better that he directly give it to the, and usually we then get some sort of a note.
Okay, I was historically, because I do a lot of the same things for other municipalities, like I send after the fact, like just like a one-pager, like your erosion control's good, your erosion control's terrible, you're missing dis-inlet protection. Send it to the developer or the contractor, copy the admin on the planning board, just so there's some
Continuity.
Yeah, and like if there's a repeat offender.
That's what I was gonna say, exactly.
Yeah. And, and, you know, my, my personal opinion is that the, some, or let me rephrase that. There's some towns that provide more guidance on private development than others for off, and Ms. White has rejoined. Roll down Barbara, just about. But some municipalities provide additional guidance or oversight of private developments, and then others do not, and it can be fairly sticky when you have a town engineer overseeing and potentially providing direction to a private development that they have limited jurisdiction on, with the exception of like erosion control when it can impact the community.
Yeah.
But that goes to like I typically provide, like if an applicant comes in front of us and says there's 980A spaces and 300 parking stalls, we go out there to generally confirm that the what was constructed is in general compliance with what came in front of the planning board, but I'm not sure if we provide that.
Actually, actually, he, he does.
Oh, he does? Okay.
He does not do any final inspection. That actually falls under the purview of the building department. And there is a fine line there between the town engineer reviews what's happening with the land. The building department handles structural things like, okay, you're supposed to have 100 parking spaces here, and for some reason you now have 140. That becomes a code, code enforcement issue?
Okay.
And that goes through the building department. However, things like the silt fencing, anything that has to do to civil, regarding civil and site work, is what we charge our engineer to review and maintain.
Have, and maybe this is more a question for Jen, have you, or has Newton or other communities you work for required, and I think they're legally allowed to, but like a performance bond for larger projects?
And you, you definitely have done that in
We have, okay.
Yeah. On, on large projects, there is almost always a performance bond, a reclamation bond, there may be a road bond, there may be a landscape, there are a whole we just haven't done a that-sized project in a while in town, so I anticipate with some of the paperwork that I've been seeing coming through the office, that one may be coming shortly. And at that point, I will bring to everybody's attention the fact that, you know, there needs to be a road bond to, for road completion bond. There needs to be a restoration bond until they meet active and substantial, in which case it flips over to being a completion bond for, for the structures.
And who so that bond is reviewed and approved by the planning board?
Yes.
And release of that bond comes through the planning board?
Goes through, the, the creation of the bond and the requirement for the bond comes through the planning board at the advice of the town engineer who calculates the costs. It is then held by the selectmen, and it can only be released by the selectmen. Planning board has no power to hold, to hold bonds.
And does the board of selectmen come to the planning board for recommendation for release of that bond?
That, usually it works the other way around. The planning board has to, has to recommend to the, to the selectmen.
Okay.
The planning board has to recommend to the selectmen, because there'll, there will sometimes be partial releases of bonds during the, the life of a bond.
Thank you. The clarification
I just want to reiterate though what Dennis said. I would like to be copied after he makes his response to the, to the contractors, so that there is some sort of checks and balances that are taking place, and that where all of a sudden something happens and we're sitting here and we look stupid because we had no idea what was taking place. So I would like to be able to know what, if something is going wrong. I don't care how small it is or whatever, I would like to know about it.
I, I do want you guys to be aware though that once you have given your approval, and something is under construction, it is out of your hands.
That's right.
It doesn't mean that you can't be report, can't know how things are going. I, I understand that, but just it's out of the hands of the planning board.
Yep.
Yeah, it then goes to code enforcement.
Yeah. But I just, like Dennis said, this way here, we'll, we'll see if there's any patents between any said contractors that continue to try to do things.
Very good. Once, once we get into a project that has that,
Yep.
I have no problem because
Yeah, well, like, like we said, it's a substantial project that you would do it on.
Yeah, the, the Xena Lane was
My guess is probably erosion-related. That's what they were checking, just because it's running down into those bases.
He went over the, the erosion control. Some, some of the hit bills of hay had rotted. They had to be replaced. I mean, it was, it was minimal stuff. Everything was still sound and okay. It was precautionary.
Okay.
On other projects, you will get literally pages of notes from the town engineer.
Okay, but that, that was more of like, are we doing it? And it is documented, so that kind of like Bob's, it's like, people that, it's kind of like Bob's, it's like, people will probably potentially come to us and we, again, send them to the code enforcement, be like, there are notes, that's what the applicant paid for.
Right.
So we're, you know, we have no jurisdiction, but we're just at least aware, we can direct somebody.
And that's why on some of those larger projects like that, like on Xena Lane, they still had money in NEPRA, even though they hadn't done anything.
Right.
To that property in a while, and I had to do a lot of research, because it wasn't, the accounting wasn't maintained. Everything else other than that has been satisfied.
Okay. Good, is there anything else? Good, so I'd like to adjourn the meeting at 7:54. Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.